Common Council Executive Committee of July eleventh to order and ask Karen to take the role, please.
President Curry.
Here.
Vice President Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Vediver.
Here.
Alder Madison.
Here.
Alder Govindarajan.
Here.
Alder Conklin.
Here.
Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Bennett. You have quorum.
Thank you. Next would be to approve our meeting minutes from our June twentieth meeting. I would entertain a motion to do so. The motion by VP Figaro Cole and second by Alder Madison, thank you. And unless I see or hear otherwise, I will, oh my gosh, words. Expect, no, except, assume, thank you Attorney Haas, assume anonymous. Approval?
Consent.
Consent, thank you, words are hard today folks. All right, seeing none, motion passes. Public comments, I do not believe we have any registered speakers, double check again. Okay, I think it's not working.
We do not have any registered speakers.
Thank you Stefan. All right, that will move us into our items for consideration, Agenda Item Two, Legislative File seven eight seven two seven, an introduction to the Independent Police Monitor, and we do have our I am Robert Copley with us virtually. Take it away.
Hi, thank you for having me. So I guess I'll just give a quick introduction as to who I am, then what the office is doing and what we're planning to do in the future. So, hi, my name is Robert Copley. I was born in Fresno, California. That's, and I did my undergraduate at Fresno State in philosophy pre-law. And then I moved to Milwaukee to attend Marquette University Law School. When I was at Marquette Law, I focused my studies on constitutional law and criminal procedure. And immediately following law school, I got my first taste of police oversight, working with the Milwaukee Fire and Police Commission. Immediately after that, I got my first taste of Madison, when I was working for Medicaid, where I coordinated the Department of Health Services responses to open record requests. And then finally, I spent the last three years working for the city of Milwaukee as its police open records legal advisor. Primary challenge of that role was processing body worn camera footage for public release. And to summarize the role, I was a civilian supervisor that served as the liaison between the police department and the city attorney's office, and generally provided guidance in complying with Wisconsin Public Records Law. My experience there motivated me to continue a career in police oversight, which brings me here, as Madison's first independent police monitor. The Office of the Independent Monitor will provide the public with an independent means of investigating and monitoring the Madison Police Department. Purpose is public accountability over our law enforcement. The public has a right to criticize, comment on, comment and make, and discuss what they want to see in their police department. The O I M, Office of the Independent Monitor, will be a way that we can do that, independent of any politics and transparent for total public guidance. Most recently, we've been working on specifically the hiring process. At the moment, the office only has one full-time employee. That would be me. And there are two additional full-time positions that will be filled in the office, a program assistant and a data analyst. Interviews for the program assistant role were completed last week, and I'm hoping to be able to make an offer sometime this week. Program assistant would be serving as both an office manager, as well as the first point of contact that the public has with the office and with the police civilian oversight board. They would be handling the day-to-day needs of the office, while also assisting me with receiving input from the public. While the data analyst will assist me with analyzing and crunching the data that we receive from N P D, and will assist me with the office's reporting. Another item that the office has been working on has been the complaint process and establishing that so that we can start taking in input from the public. I'm expecting that we will have a public-facing complaint form approved by the full board at the end of this month. It will be an item for the full board meeting, I believe it is July twenty-seventh. A lot of thought and discussion has been had in the Complaint Process Subcommittee, with the goal of creating an empathetic process for hearing stories from the public concerning their interactions with law enforcement. And I'm finalizing a complaint form now, and it will be reviewed Friday morning by the Complaint Process Subcommittee, before it's run through the Executive Subcommittee, and then the full board later this month. So that actually leads me to mention that we have quite a few meetings. The Police Civilian Oversight Board has in its large degree of subcommittees now that are meeting weekly. We have, the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee is meeting this Thursday, July thirteenth at six P M. The Complaint Process Subcommittee, as that I mentioned, is meeting this Friday morning, July fourteenth at ten A M. And we're also building the Community Engagement Subcommittee with plans to have that meet regularly on Wednesdays at six P M. So to run that by real fast, that'd be Wednesdays at six, Thursdays at six, and then Friday at ten A M. Then the Executive Subcommittee meetings are held every third Thursday of the month, so the next one would be Thursday, July twentieth at five P M. And the full board meetings are held the fourth Thursday of the month, so the next one would be Thursday, July twenty-seventh at five P M. All of these meetings are virtual, and the public is welcome and encouraged to join us. The office is new, and I'm building from the ground up right now. I've spent a lot of time looking to other jurisdictions for inspiration and rubrics to avoid reinventing the wheel. And further, we have received extensive assistance from NA COLE, the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, in trainings and communications. This is a small team, and I appreciate everyone's patience. It's my first time heading a department, and I'm learning something new every week. But the most important task I feel I can do right now is listen. This office has been a long time coming, and I don't want to squander that work. I'm coming in at the end of a very long and arduous process, a lot of thought and important discussion has been had that built this. I want to aim to build a strong foundation so that the office will stand for years to come, and that my successors have both stable procedures to inherit, as well as the flexibility to ensure that the office can adapt to any changes in priority of the board, public interest, and changes in policing itself. Thank you all for letting me introduce myself.
Thank you, Robert, I will open up to questions.
I have no questions, Chair, but I just want to welcome Robert and appreciate his introduction.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Thanks Alder Evers. I will also second that I have a couple of questions, but I was going to wait and see if anybody else did. So, Robert, that sounds like a lot of subcommittees, can you run down what are all the subcommittees of the P C O B again?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, there's three subcommittees right now that are specifically targeted on particular projects. And then there's the Executive Subcommittee, which, you know, we're under the understanding of what that would be doing, and then there's the full board. But as far as those three subcommittees, that would be the Community Engagement, the Policy and Procedures, and the Complaint Process. So, the Complaint Process has been the most active one at the moment. What we're doing is we're building the actual method, method for the public to come to the board or to the office to file complaints, or even just comments, commendations, whatever, a process by which we can fairly inequitably, but also reasonably, like, maintain and track all of the information that we're going to be receiving from the public. That Complaint Process Subcommittee is also, in fact, this Friday, going to be starting the discussion on what the actual process of investigating complaints might look like. For example, like, all right, we've got a form, now what happens next? The next step would be, you know, now we actually speak to the person that filled out this form, and we determine how we're going to go about handling and processing those, that input from the public. Whether that be opening a specific investigation, starting an audit of particular policies and procedures, what have you. There's a long, long list of things that we can do, and a lot of tasks and routes that we could move past from the initial complaint receipt process. So that's going to be what mostly the Complaint Process Subcommittee is focusing on, is what do we actually do with the information that we get from the public? The Policy and Procedure Subcommittee is, as it sounds like, it's going to be specifically focused on policies and procedures, focusing in on how the board itself functions, but also any recommendations that might be made as far as changes to police procedure or policies. And then finally, there's the Community Engagement Subcommittee. This is very important to me, I am, as I mentioned earlier, I'm not from Madison. I'm also a white male. I necessarily have many blind spots that other people within the community might be able to fill me in with, as far as what their experiences with law enforcement would be. I'm, everyone has different experiences, and everyone has a different voice to be heard. And I want to make sure that all of that is happening, because the more centralized we get, the more, the smaller this team gets, it's easier for people to be ignored, and I don't want to have that happen. I want to make sure that even if we move slower, we make sure that everyone is heard in the process. So that's what the Community Engagement Subcommittee is going to be doing, is essentially making sure that we are taking steps to ensure that those voices are heard, that people even know that we're here. This is actually, the nightmare scenario for a lot of police oversight agencies is for someone to essentially not even know that the agency exists, for them not to even know that this is an avenue that they can utilize in city government when bringing their complaints about police, or any recommendations as to changes in what they want to see in their police. So we want to make sure that we're visible, that we are open, and that we're listening. And that's going to be the purpose of the committee, Subcommittee.
Thank you. I have one more question, unless anybody else does, right. So I understand some of the challenges, obviously being the first in the role and not quite having full staff yet. But within kind of the work that you've already done or identified with the board, and the staff that you currently work with, what work, if any yet, or can we look to that the board, the office, you and your staff will work towards mitigating the racial disparities that we have regarding law enforcement contact and arrest rates in Madison?
So, I think that that is, that is really the white whale, isn't it, just the big, the big goal. And I would like to say that there, there is some specific one task that we can do to fix that, but I don't think that that's going to be, I don't think there's going to be a magic solution to any of this. It's going to have to be a larger project with multiple different moving functions to build towards that. First step, I think for that is going to necessarily, as I mentioned, is going to be listening. I want to make sure that the public has a chance to come in and share their stories. So that's where the Complaint Process is, and that's where our first priority has been, has been building a way for anyone within the city to bring in their input. The next step is going to be, and within the Community Engagement, the Community Engagement Subcommittee is making sure that that is actually shared then in an equitable way, so that people of marginalized communities will not only know that this is an avenue that they can use, that they will not only know that this is a discussion that they can be involved in, but they will be actively encouraged to participate, and that we can work around their schedules, not just ours. I don't want this to be something where we only meet at times at like, you know, three P M on a Thursday. That's a really common time that people are working, so we want to be able to come to and meet the people where they are. And that's going to be the primary purpose of the Community Engagement Subcommittee, is like, finding out ways that we can better serve that, that role. Now, in addressing to, like, racial disparities and arrests and stops, this is all going to be tracked through data. And what we aim to do is to take an independent and impartial look at what N P D does and what it is doing, and then what trends we can identify from that, if we can find what policies are having what effects, essentially to be a thermometer on where, reading the temperature of where things are going with particular policies and procedures, to see if we can make recommendations that serve a more equitable purpose. Now, that data crunching is also going to be a core function of the office itself. These reports will be looking specifically at these kinds of stops and arrests, as, and any of these impacts that may be trackable through demographic information. But like I said earlier about the Complaint Process, there's also going to be a separate and independent process of actually opening investigations where need be, or recommending that N P D reopen investigations if the public doesn't feel that it was sufficiently looked into. So, there's a lot of different ways that we can go about doing this, and we intend to just do them all. So, it's, it's a long, and it's going to be a difficult process, but I'm excited to do it, and I'm happy to keep building towards that goal.
Thank you, Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Chair, and welcome, Robert. I did have a question, can you just slow down when you say, not the policy and procedure, not the community engagement, but what's the other Subcommittee, and slow down?
The Complaint Process Subcommittee?
The Complaint Process, that's what you were saying, Complaint Process, that's the other Subcommittee that's going to meet on Friday at ten A M?
Yes.
And this is the, the committee that's been putting together this? So when you say it's coming in front of the board, you're talking about the full board of the P C O B?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And when does, when does the, when will it come to the Common Council, once it's been through all the processes? You know, we'll kind of see it last, I'm, I'm just wondering, are we going to get a glimpse of this before it comes to us, if that makes sense?
I don't believe it would need to come to the Common Council, since this would be the inner workings of the office itself. However, if the council would like, I would be happy to give a presentation on it once we have it implemented.
Okay, I think that might be good. And then to, so my second question is too, so when complaints are happened, or when complaints are made, are those public records, like, will, will we be able to see, maybe at the end, you know, like, will we be able to see the officer that was in trouble, or anything like that? Is that any type of public information when people make requests like that against the police department, is my question?
So, that's actually, there's two questions there. So the first question is if they're public records, yes, and they are public records under the definition, just through the Wisconsin statute. However, the actual disclosure and decision of any of this information would be subject to the balancing test, as well as various other state statute, like, exceptions to the public records law. I believe that a city attorney, Mike Haas, would be able to communicate more on point as to like, how this would actually work within the city itself, as far as transferring within city governments. But as far as anything, the names of officers being investigated, anything like that, this is all information that, you know, is subject to redaction under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point thirty-six sub-six. So, anything that is necessary that has to be released, but like, can be released, but items that shouldn't be released, because this could, like, for example, taint an ongoing investigation, or have a, otherwise an impact that would contradict the actual purpose of the office. That can all be subject to redaction under the Wisconsin Public Records Law.
And one final question, where is this information going to be housed at, like, and for how long, like?
Sorry, the, which information?
Yeah, with the Complaint Process, I'm sorry, let me, so like, how long would it take, I guess, when people make a complaint, how long would the process take, or we don't know yet?
I, I couldn't say how long that would take, to be honest, if I received a complaint right now, I have no idea how long it would take, because, I mean, frankly, it's just me. Once I have staff, that makes things a little bit faster, but also, like, there's going to be procedures and policies that we're building to actually, you know, have a way of answering that question down the line. A big part of the Complaint Process Subcommittee, and an item that has been brought up many times in the discussion, has been making sure that the public is aware of what the process will be. If they bring in a complaint, that it's not just a matter of them writing on a post-it note and sending it off into the wind and hoping for the best. We want to make sure them know from day one, what's, what's step two, what's step three, what's step four, what can you expect? And more importantly, also communicate with them as to determine what it is that they want. If they want to see, for example, disciplinary action taken, then we can direct them through the Police and Fire Commission. If they want to see, you know, just a discussion concerning policy, if they want to see an investigation done into anything that might be reflective within police data that's maintained by the Madison Police Department, all of these are different avenues that we can do, or that we can follow. But the, as far as like, how long it would take from like, I received a complaint to I have satisfaction from the complaint, that would be variable based on the complaint, but also I have no idea how to, where to even begin with answering that question at the moment, just because we're so new and we don't have the perspective.
No, I understand, I understand, thank you, Robert, I appreciate it.
Thank you Alder Conklin, Vice President Figaro Cole.
Thank you, Chair, thanks, Robert, for, for presenting today, I really appreciate it. So when we talk about data crunching, and, you know, being, being one of the main points of the office, so what is, what is the status of the discussions on getting access to data today from N P D?
So at the moment, we are working on putting together a memorandum of understanding to assure that the same procedure that we're talking about within the office for like Complaint Process, that there is also a similar kind of process that is written down between this office and N P D. So, you know, staff come and go, I come and go, the chief may come and go. But ultimately, what we want to have is a framework through which that data can flow indefinitely and without interruption. The ordinance is pretty clear that, you know, unfettered access to N P D records is given to the office, and it's specifically for that purpose, of being able to crunch data and have an accurate idea of what is happening at, in the Madison Police Department. As far as like, steps that are being taken right now, it's going to be building that memorandum of understanding and making sure that we have that specific procedure, so that if the records custodian isn't available, and they need to have this data transferred in some way, then we already have an agreement between this office and the police department as to how that would happen.
And the question related to it, but, and I mean, I don't intend to have a massive discussion on this at this moment, but since we have the body worn cameras piloted in the works, it is my understanding that your office will also be part of that, of the evaluation of the, of the pilot? So, do you think that we will have a memorandum of understanding in place before the pilot is completed?
Yes.
Staying the data?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Don't see any other raised hands in chambers or online, so I will assume that questions are complete. Robert, before you go, I guess I have one last question. And this can also be a get back to us, but how can the council continue to be supportive of yourself, your role, your office, the board, considering that it was the council's efforts that got? that got um the independent monitor position in place?
Um off the top of my head, I would uh wholeheartedly recommend that uh anybody from the council uh come and attend our meetings. Uh that's where most of the discussion and most of the rubber is hitting the road. So um I really uh do not, I don't want to walk over the work that was done by uh the city already in creating this office. I don't want to ignore all the hard work that has been done. Uh gallons of ink have been spilled in these reports and the people that were involved in these reports are still here. So I am happy to talk with any of them and really encourage them to join in on in the discussion. As far as uh support, I I have felt supported so far and um I'm happy to uh uh meet with uh any of the alder people that uh would like to. I do uh want to specify though that like uh my calendar is a little bit weird at the moment, so just give me a about two week grace period if you're going to try and schedule something. Uh but yeah, I'm open and available and happy to talk to anybody.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that information and introducing yourself as well as those offers. Um so hopefully uh myself and peers will take you up on that.
All right.
All right, that moves us on to our third agenda item, Legislative File seven eight four six three, the Alder Intern Matching Program. I believe I'm turning that over to our Council Chief of Staff.
Okay, I'd like to share my screen here. Wonderful. So attached to this agenda is this um draft um guidelines and resources designed to help alders uh utilize the money that has been placed in the twenty twenty-three Council Office Budget, um two hundred and fifty dollars per alder uh for interns. And so um I I don't want to, I'm not, I obviously don't want to read this whole thing word for word, but let me just give you a quick uh lay of the land and then I'll take questions, thoughts, discussion, feedback, take notes on what what everyone is 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 saying. So the idea of this program really was to be able to give alders an opportunity to um have individual, set up something individually with interns, with an intern of their own, and to provide some amount of stipend for that for that work. And um the way it's designed, it's designed so that the the work is really, in a lot of ways, um it's kind of an independent effort on the part of each alder. So these guidelines give um some pointers, some references, legal considerations, operational considerations, there are some forms from H R that need to be turned in within certain amounts of time, and so on and so forth, as well as explaining the um scroll down here, explaining the two hundred and fifty dollars uh per alder that have been that has been already um allocated. Um and so I it's separated into um a few major steps, creating an intern job description, recruiting an intern. Uh this is not working, okay. Interviewing and choosing an intern, completing employment forms, um creating an internship agreement, and then rap, you know, supervising, providing feedback, and then wrapping up. And so this is to give folks a uh kind of a bit of guidance and how this will be rolled out um since it will be, it will involve some forms. And so um there are some A P Ms, uh administrative procedure, administrative procedure memorandum that are relevant in this case um and and so on. So that and I worked on, this was originally, this program was originally proposed by um Alder Bennett. And I worked with Alder Bennett and Alder Govindarajan um and Alder Tischler uh to get some feedback on this document as well. So I I'm going to turn it over to you all. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Karen. Um so we have questions regarding the document or anything that was just presented to us. Vice President Figueroa.
Um for the payment at the last page, they are on page three. Is that going to be in accordance to city payroll or is that actually going to be like whenever they want to? I mean, does it would it be best to say payment will be in accordance to payroll versus giving them an alternative on discussing when that will be?
Um actually, I believe it's done, it would be more done like the way we do the the Police Civilian Oversight Board um stipend, where I think we would set something up and then we would communicate that with finance and then it would it would roll out that way. So um I don't think it's done as as part of the pay because this is treated differently than um an employee.
I just want to kind of like maybe we should avoid having twenty different weights of maybe we should just give direction on what we want instead of opening that for every alder to decide.
So then I would suggest there would be some considerations about how much you pay at the upfront, how much you want to pay, if you want to pay anything in the middle, or do you just want to hold it until the end? Um one piece of that that I want to throw into the mix here for your for your thoughts is that because alders can give each other their two fifty, an alder may have more, you know, one alder may have collected five people's money and then they would decide they'd like to give it in increments, whereas somebody else may only have two fifty, in which case they may decide they just want to give it. And so I think that was my my logic there is that it because it's flexible, um I wouldn't want to encourage someone to necessarily give everything upfront, but if it's two fifty, it might be a different story than if it's a thousand or two thousand dollars. So I'm open to discussion. Thank you.
Vice President Figueroa, do you still have a question?
Uh I mean, I don't I don't have any questions. I mean, I just a comment and we can do that later.
Uh I have a question in terms of creating an intern job description. So my understanding from previous conversations and then reviewing the document is um it's highly independent and on the alder to guide, provide tasks. Um if there isn't already, I would suggest adding um like a additional layer of possibly like a check and balance on a job description because I think again, um depending on experience that folks have had with uh interns previously, um there could be um a difference of how to go about that or what core tasks could be.
Are you envisioning, for example, council office review of the ads before they're placed or?
Yes, some some additional lay, I don't know if um because I know uh members of uh our current C C E C were very interested in pushing this forward and as well as working with interns to provide um some access and and knowledge into public services in our service. Um I forgot what was going on, just realistic expectations and an additional person to possibly look into that to for feasibility, if that makes sense, or capacity. Um I guess it's less of a question but more of a comment in terms of I when I've had interns, they've always been attached to a school. Um so there's like that guidelines in terms of how long it is. Um there are documents that guide what a supervisor's role is, how and and um there's always been like a liaison at the university or the institution that all also is available to check in with. Um let's say if there's issues that arise or conflicts, um or even to provide positive feedback. So that would just be one of my questions, comments, suggestions. Um and then I think latching on to the question about pay. Um I appreciate the clarity and and what each alder is allotted to and also the flexibility and if someone is not going to use um that stipend, being able to transfer it to another alder. Um is there any guidance or thoughts um that go deeper into? Let's say uh there's a project that an intern is specifically working on that maybe goes longer than the duration of the planned internship. Um a point of if the stipend is gone, it's gone. And and um a lot of internships I know are also um offered with no stipend or pay. And so some clarity there on if if and when that it would be a mutual agreement to continue on and that there would no longer be the continuation of payment if the stipend has been used.
I think that that's something that you could write into your alder intern agreement. Um uh you could also revisit that at the end of the stipulated time and then say, you know, negotiate a new agreement basically to say, oh, you know, we'd like to continue on uh uh understanding that the stipend has already been paid out for this calendar year. Um that'd be my recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Have other alders um in the queue for questions. Vice President Figueroa.
Same line of thinking um with the with the scope and the expectations and all that stuff. I mean, can we develop a form that is somewhat uniform? And I'm not saying a form that contains um just to guide people on what is exactly that we are we are doing so that form can then become the thing that is evaluated on this is completed, these tasks were done, these expectations were accomplished. Um and that can include, again, the discussion about um when the on the other side of the equation, if the job is done before time, the job is done. This is what we hired you to do. So and and maybe um as a point of exercise and evaluating the program, having some sort of of basic exit interview on the experience for that from that person um to and again, we can start that with some kind of template to guide the questions and some space for free, whatever, but something that we can actually track um the success of the of the project. But I think having a template for for the job description that is just again guiding you on how to create it and definitely a template with the scope that has a some sort of table, a table that says, you know, twenty percent of the time is this, this is what you're going to be doing, those goals were accomplished and put realistic goals in there so things get actually done um will be a very um will be an equitable way to to kind of like rate this program overall. That's all I got.
Thank you, Vice President Alder Bennett.
Yep, uh well, kind of going off of what my um colleague just said. Um I just, I guess I kind of wanted to comment and give like a little bit of insight into like my experience with interns. At this point, I had one intern like last year and now I actually have two interns right now, which I know I I I'm fancy, I have two more than most people, actually one more than most people or others. Um both are working on different tasks and I sat down with them um in the beginning of the internship and was like, what do what do you want to get out of this? Here's what I need and kind of matching them to together to meet their goals. Um also to what Jeanette was just saying, um I would encourage us to like, if we are going to work with a college and university, especially if this is for a specific intern program, there might be specific guidelines that they need to meet. Um for example, one of my current interns is using this as one of their credit courses that they need to graduate. And for that course, I needed to like sign an intern agreement and like send it into the U W. And I believe part of it is like they, at the end of it, the U W asks like for a an evaluation of the intern um and then sent to the sent to them at the end of the course. So there might be policies and procedures depending on like already in place, depending on what program that they're going through. Um but for step five of the internship, I think going off of what Jayle was saying, um Alder Curry or President Curry was saying is that it might be helpful to have a specific kind of guideline of um supervising an intern, like having weekly check-ins. Um if um bringing interns into meetings with staff, um ensuring that you and your intern have a clear line of communication and like how you're going to communicate, all things of which like um, I don't know, I I feel like I kind of struggled with at the at at first. Um but would be helpful to kind of have a guideline for alders.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. I wanted to lean over and ask Attorney Haas, is it appropriate to ask each other questions in this? Okay, um so Alder Bennett, I have a question in response of how, first off, two interns?
Yeah, you know, I I mean, wasn't that same popular, um everyone wants me. Um but no, it it just kind of like happened, like networking and like one, I was like, yeah, sure, of course, when I if I'm elected next term, you can come on. And then the other one would approached me and was like, I I need this for my credit course, which also raises a question about like distribution of funds. I've thought about this, like, do we split the two fifty? But like, should I just split the two fifty between the two of them or not? One of the interns is like, I don't really care if I get paid, I just need this course to be done so I can graduate. And the other one is like, I don't really care if I can pay, but two hundred and fifty dollars is nice. Um so I I mean, it would be helpful for me to know like what, how to split those funds and.
Yeah, sure, it makes sense. Um and then I also noticed in the document that um according to A P M, even though there is a stipend, they're still considered unpaid, so.
Well.
Um a question that I had in in terms of the either interest in an internship or the conversations you had when you met with um your prospective interns, what seemed to be the resounding, like obviously there was a need for course credits, um but what type of knowledge, experience, um insight are uh folks who are seeking intern internships and your experience have expressed?
Um I can actually just pull up what they said they wanted. Um so one of the things was experience writing policy memos um and things to put in their portfolios, especially when jobs um ask for a for writing um a writing sample. Um and then, you know, policy-related jobs need experience with writing those types of materials. So I have them working on like drafting me policy memos and doing that research and synthesizing materials. Um and one said, have fun and learn with more things. And the other intern was just very interested in housing-related policy. Um so another, you know, overall, so for my interns, it seemed basically like writing, researching, and just a general overall interest in learning about local government.
Thank you. Sorry, I have one more because I'm I'm very fascinated. Um in terms of the independence in if an alder chooses to have an intern or multiple interns or you share an intern, um obviously, this is your second term, so you have a little bit more knowledge. We have um first-term alders, we're all still in the process of learning. How have you navigated assisting? Like, I've never written a legislative policy, for instance. How do you, how have you navigated assisting your interns with tasks that you need assistance with? That you're not also maybe as well-versed as a city staff member or legislative analyst, et cetera, et cetera?
Right, so I've really just tried to um bring other people in if I can. For example, I have one, um one of the interns is very interested in housing and a specific zoning-related item that I have interest in. Um so we're meeting next week with former alder and zoning guru Patrick Heck. Um, you know, so like mansplain to us zoning or explain, not mansplain, but you know, explain to us zoning. So um bringing in other leaders um or other people that can help. Um one intern made a um policy memo that is actually completed at this point and I actually shared it with um Mathias um to so then like we can meet like together and then like Mathias can use that as a starting point to maybe making a memo to all alders on this specific topic.
Okay, thank you for that. And just a point of clarification for attendees and folks in the chambers. Um Alder Bennett is speaking about our new legislative analyst, Isaac Mathias.
Yes.
Um I have a comment, but I'll loop back because of the Vice President Figueroa is in the queue. the queue.
Yes. So one question that because I mean, it seems like the discussion always ends focusing on the UW students, no, no offense, but what is the what is the we have an age limit for this? Because I'm thinking like, you know, Justice Castellanos Group that they do every year and they have the high school students with their own internship program that they have. If that's something that we can expand to high schoolers that are more interested in policy?
I put 18 and up because I think when we interact with minors, I think there's probably additional layers that we need to investigate in terms of what we need to set up, how we need it to be supervised, 18 and up.
Eighteen. So still high school can be eighteen.
Potentially.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And that's all I got for sure this time.
I'll go look for other questions. Okay. So the comment that I wanted to come back to kind of related the questions that I asked you, Alder Bennett, were just about workflow and management. And I didn't find that there's already 20 of us. And if all 20 of us sent one email to every staff person every day, which I think we probably do, or multiple and and trying to not necessarily create more silos, but create more structured practices and procedures for clarity of who to go to. And I know just based on information that I'm learning about the council offices involvement with interns, the the depth of the tasks and the projects are very in-depth and the time or the length of the internships are very short. And so while I support interns and I'm definitely interested in learning more from other Alders, I don't know if any other Alders besides Alder Bennett have council interns, but would be worried about taking on more work per se or putting more work on others if I didn't have capacity. So more so a comment than a question. And yeah, that is all I had. Alder Govindarajan?
I don't have a alder intern, but I am a legislative intern at the Capitol. So I can maybe put that perspective into things. I work maybe like eight hours a week, maybe nine maximum. But even in that kind of sense, if you have an intern only working that much a week, you are still able to get like a decent bit done when it comes to like policy work and memos and research, even like constituent work, but please don't make interns don't do that. Like, you are still able to get a lot of what both the intern would want and also what the alder themselves would want to gain from that intern as well a little bit. So maybe that kind of answers that comment of yours. But yeah.
It provides context for sure. And I appreciate that. And I think, you know, bring highlights something of knowledge sharing, like unless we have the opportunities to engage with each other and know more about maybe things we're doing outside of our alder role that contribute, I would have never. I mean, I know that you're an intern, but the the structure being similar. And I had a comment that was in relation to yours. Oh, in terms of also understanding the roles of council office staff and now being fully staffed too, making a more concerted effort to provide clarity to Alders as well as city staff on what are the specific roles within all of the council office roles that also could be beneficial to Alders that they may not know exist or they have capacity to ask for. Or like Alder Bennett mentioned, working side and side with a council office staff on a task that they may already have been assigned or working on or are passionate about and can tap into other areas of interest. So go to Alder Bennett.
Um, I I'm so sorry. I don't want to like always have the last word or whatever. So I'm sorry. But I just thought too, when I was asked answering your questions, it actually it actually might be helpful if we had something to provide like interns and Alders with when we there's things that we don't like can't answer. I don't know if interns are allowed to watch our training videos, but things like that, or maybe like, I don't know if the council office or like, or whatever, have like a policy memo, one on one blueprint type thing. I don't even I don't know if that exists. But I don't know. Maybe I guess it would be helpful if they if there's a specific topics that's specific to the work they're doing, if they could watch our training videos as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Those are accessible to the public. So yeah, that is a great point and a plug to watch those. And even if you've watched them before, go back and watch them again and refreshers. And also, just a reminder, I won't put you on the spot today, Kehinde, but we do have our Aspire intern Kehinde who's attending with us today over Zoom. And so that could also be if Alders have lingering questions about internships and how to provide worthwhile and successful experiences, we have an intern that we could tap into. I think this is Kehinde's second internship with us. So and Kehinde, feel free to unmute yourself and share if there's anything, but I won't put you on the spot. All right. Not seeing any other hands or Alders in the queue. I'm wondering for our. Yeah, I was going to ask you a question like, do you have enough feedback from us? Are there other things that you're looking for?
Thank you. Yeah, we're down the same wavelength. Yeah, a couple of different things. One thing I want to make it really clear that if we do proceed, and I know there is a lot of interest to proceed, we you mentioned, I mean, there are a number of things that were mentioned as like, well, this resource would be nice, this resource would be good, you want this. We are not in a place right now to turn that around at lightning speed to provide that for you at this point. So if you do proceed with this, you have to understand that you're proceeding very independently. I think what we can do is to collect, I like the idea of exit interviews, and to collect the materials that everyone's using and any best practices, feedback, I can think about putting that, you know, putting those things together so that Alders can get back to us with showing us how they're building them, what they're doing. And we can create materials over time. But I want to just make it clear that if you do proceed with this endeavor at this point, we can't provide any kind of in-depth support. I really just wanted to make sure you understood that. And then also, I think I am just looking for direction on if I add a couple of different things. I, you know, do you want more on this? You know, what do you want to vote on it? Like kind of where you're where y'all are at in terms of how you want to roll this out? I know, like I said, there are some folks who are very interested and would like to do this. I don't know if you want to do it as a pilot, if you want to open up to everybody. I'm looking for a little direction on how you'd like to do that. Thank you.
Um, well, that's a great question. I think because the Alder Intern Match Program was a on the list of topics that CCEC wanted to address and resolve during this CCEC term, I feel it would be appropriate for us to sign off on it. And then because all of our peers would have access as well, that maybe if there's a presentation or some type of introduction, letting Alders know that the draft or the final draft has been complete and they have an opportunity to provide feedback and then possibly have a vote of the whole membership. Is that appropriate, Attorney Haas? Any comments, thoughts about that from CCC members or those attending? Not seeing any. Okay. So last probably comment or discussion, if there is any on the topic. So obviously, Alder Bennett had shared her experience of having an intern prior to this program and also being doing a lot of work in order to provide some feedback and and structure to get the document before us today. But some clarity on if Alders do choose to go forward with going into the program that obviously the the draft before us is not final and complete. And I didn't hear any objection to getting feedback from the rest of our peers as well. So maybe a little bit more direction in terms of the timeline, like, do we feel like what by our August 1 CCEC meeting, we would want to see revised or the additions and feedback provided today incorporated and then possibly move that forward to the next common council meeting for a presentation or vote. I could use some help here. Or if you all want me to make an executive decision, I can also do that. Vice President Figaro Cole asked if I was asking for a motion. Sure, if you have one offhand, I think just some clarity and if there are folks who are eager, we there's at least one more step of revision and implementing feedback that was asked for today. And keeping in mind, the timelines keeps getting extended if we don't have an approved final draft. So if there is a motion, I would be free to entertain it at this time.
That semi-final thing and then release it, is that what we are directing you to do to make the changes and come back with that or?
I think so. I mean, I know that there's been a lot of discussion prior to today's discussions. So don't want to prolong the inevitable, but.
I mean, I think at this point, we have some good guidelines. So we can whoever wants to start their internship, they can go ahead with that, I suppose. So but I don't know if this if I mean, maybe if as for you ask, is this is this a report or is this something that we got a motion to accept her presentation or what? What are we doing here?
Do you want to provide?
Mike? Do we have to accept it?
Sure. There's also Alder in the queue. Alder Govindarajan?
I was going to say, honestly, this, to me at least, looks pretty straightforward. And maybe we can just approve it and refer it to common council for final approval unless there is any major changes that we want to make. But I don't hear any.
But.
So point of clarification, I think, is I heard Attorney Haas say that it doesn't necessarily have to go to council. So I had added that layer in terms of do we want to provide our peers opportunity to provide feedback? Or is it good to go now?
And it's a new pro process and we tweak it as we need to and let's move on. There's people that are waiting for it. That's my my thing. But I'm still I'm still wondering, do I need to make a motion for that? Or is this just a report that she's presenting?
I think that's a question for you, Attorney Haas.
No, I don't think you have to have a motion. I mean, this is really internal to the council as a body. And so if if there's a consensus to go forward, I don't think you necessarily need that motion.
Yeah, I think, yeah, just move forward with it at this point. All right. I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Vice President Figaro Cole. Alder Evers?
Thank you, President. Yeah, I fully agree. I don't think we need to send this to council. That's why you have an executive committee to handle administrative details like this. And you know, whether we vote among ourselves to approve it or we just by consensus, I don't think it would harm. It would be harmful to just make a motion to approve it as a kind of part of our normal procedures. But and so it goes in the minutes that we've approved it. But that's neither here nor there. Let's just move forward.
Thank you, Alder Evers. For those of you who don't know, my initials are J C and the C is for collaborator. So thank you for that point. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I agree with moving forward. But I am wondering, I don't know exactly how it works procedurally. Like, I wonder if other Alders are going to like be like, oh, CCC made their executive decision, although we are the executive committee. And I don't know if they would want to have the opportunity to weigh in more than obviously being here, which they're not, other Alders are not. And like, I mean, I'm thinking just like in the future, like, how does that work? Does this if we just accept it now and just say this is our procedures, is that what the procedures are forever moving forward? Or like, do we need to have it written down and accepted as a resolution or something?
So my my understanding, I mean, this is something that's being made available to Alders, correct? And so it's not required that Alders participate. And so the program can start. And as Alder Figaro Cole said, if you find that changes need to be made, it can always be changed in the future.
Okay. Thank you for that. Does that answer your question, Alder Bennett?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Figaro Cole, do you have a motion?
To second tax motion, but Alder McKinney has a question. Looks like over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alder.
Thank you very much for recognizing me. I guess my question is, is that with this getting to the executive committee.
And here.
Is it possible for you to come to your?
Yeah, or your seat or the podium?
Yeah, podium or seat. So they can hear online.
Thank you very much for recognizing me. My question was, is that it was presented to the executive committee for input and that was input that was was given by members of the executive committee. My question is, is that 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 will the full council have the opportunity to give input? I don't know what that input looks like or will look like, but the opportunity. So so let me make sure I understand, is the body making a recommendation to the the full council or where does that stand? I guess that's where I'm kind of a bit confused.
Thank you for the question, Alder Harrington McKinney. I believe Vice President Figaro Cole was prepared to make a motion, but our council chief of staff also has a comment?
Just want to make it clear. So this $250 per alder was put into the budget into the 2023 budget by the council with the instruction to create this program. It was originally worked on by myself, by our Aspire interns from last summer, as well as our previous legislative analyst. And then it has been continued to work on also with Alder Bill Tischler, Alder Bennett, and Alder Govindarajan also providing more feedback. And so we are, I'm just, I guess I'm I'm trying to make the money, you know, the money's been there. So trying to give some structure for folks to know how to use the money that's already there is is kind of what I'm attempting with this guidelines.
So just one clarifying question. It's not about the money. It is about the because you had other input, it is about the guidelines and procedures that will follow the use or not use because the decision whether to use the monies or not rests with the individual Alders. But I'm I will agree with what Alder Bennett said. We want to eliminate the opportunity of those recommendations coming back to the council and someone saying saying that, you know, can we modify it? We didn't have input. I just want to have some clarity because we don't want this to be a sticking point when, you know, when it gets back to the council. If you don't feel that there will be, that's fine. If you don't feel that there, there will be, that's fine. But I just wanted to make sure that that flipped up in my mind as well. Thank you, I'm completing.
Thank you, Alder. Um, so another point of clarification, um, in addition to the budget consideration that was made for, um, our current budget, 2023, um, it, the indication or asked to move forward with developing some protocols is not a referral to the common council. Um, so hopefully within, there's one more Alder in the queue, um, within maybe a motion or, uh, possibly suggestion to move forward. Maybe that could be, um, I, as the president, could send out, CCEC met on this, send out the video, um, for Alders to watch if they have questions, and then possibly have it come back, um, not come back, but, um, by our neck, our August meeting, possibly that's like the deadline for feedback, et cetera. So, um, I'm going to go to Alder Govendarajan.
I'm just going to take your idea over there. Um, so motion to have the council president email other Alders asking for feedback and then referring it back to the next CCEC meeting for final approval?
What, sorry, let me get that down. Motion to... Can you say it again for me? Sorry.
Oh.
Um, motion for the common council president to email other Alders seeking feedback and then, um, referring it to the next CCEC meeting for final approval.
And that was seconded by Vice President? Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Oh, um, excellent. Could you add some specific timelines, dates, so that you know what period of time that it, that they must reply back to the president? Because that way you have a, um, a very specific timeline.
Yes, thank you for that. All right. There's conversations happening behind you. Go ahead, Attorney Haas.
So it, it might be best, uh, if the committee wants to do that, to have the chief of staff send out the email requesting feedback so we don't create a open meetings issue.
Thank you, Attorney Haas.
Are you okay to amend that motion? I didn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, so, sorry.
Yes, that's an amendment, I guess.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other hands or Alders in the queue for questions, I'm going to consider that, uh, this agenda item is complete and we have direction on how to move forward. All right.
Oh wait, you'll take a vote.
All right. Uh, since there's a motion and a second on the floor, um, I will assume unanimous consent unless I see or hear otherwise. All right, that motion passes. Thank you all. And then we'll move on to our council office updates, which is Agenda Item 4, Legislative File 75427.
Thank you very much. All right, so, um, my regular updates. I've got some tips and reminders that I'd like to highlight for everyone, as well as some project updates. Um, we did add a couple of additional dates, possible dates for the, um, council retreat slash experiential workshop with YWCA. If you could respond to the new dates, um, or if you haven't had a chance to respond at all, please respond to the doodle poll by the end of the meeting, the council meeting tonight, because we'll be finalizing the date for that particular event based on the results tomorrow. I'm not sure how many of you have had an opportunity to attempt to sync your, um, calendars to your Outlook calendar yet, so I created a little survey and then somebody did it immediately and I, I really appreciate that person. And then I realized I needed to put a little field in there to say who you are. So if, if that person could go back in and actually redo that, I appreciate that. Sorry about that. So now it asks for your name as well, so I know which of you have had a chance to figure out your calendars. And there's multiple ways to figure it out. You can simply use your Outlook calendar and keep it up to date, and that, that's fine. You can work with Dane Net to figure out if it's possible to sync your calendars. Um, you can, and we have now a permission to use Calendly app, there's links to it in this update that you can look into it. And, um, you can, you just, you may decide to go that route. Um, I know some of you have had struggles with the calendars. I just want to reinforce that the more coordinated calendars you all have, the more efficiently we can schedule and help you schedule your meetings, um, which I think is, is a benefit for all. So I want to encourage that and I want to get a little sense of where we're at with that. Um, I want to highlight, there's some planning actually, really took the assignment seriously and created a number of additional videos. There are some, some other departments as well, but I wanted to kind of roll them out so that, you know, I could sort of spotlight each kind of department at each time. So today I'm going to, um, spotlight planning. They created a number of, um, videos and PowerPoints on their major initiatives. This should be helpful for you as we, we move into budget season, learning a little more about some of what they consider to be their major initiatives. So more videos and, um, accompanying PowerPoints are available on the, the, the council website. The link is here, that's just a little screenshot for you, so you can kind of get a taste of what's on there, but the, but the link is available to you. Um, of course, we always recommend you, as, as President Curry mentioned, please take a look at those videos, the budget videos in particular, with the budget coming up. Now, you may remember from my last update that I, um, implemented a, um, a request, a kind of a courtesy deadline for providing resolution materials to the council office, so that we have plenty of time to get, uh, any resolutions we've been tasked with writing or helping you write, uh, finalize into Legisdar, all the details worked out, all the nuances, the edits, the, the, all the things that happened with those. Um, and so this is just a reminder about that, since it is an, um, a new, a recent, um, ask of ours. Um, and so you can just look at that information and it's available there. Um, oh, and then I also, as we are, we're working on providing improved clarity and procedures for a number of different internal operations. Um, I would like to request that if you have any feedback that you would like to provide to, on council office members, staff members or operations, please direct those to me. If you do happen to provide feedback to a council office staff member individually, please copy me on that email. Um, and that's, that's, that's my request there. I'm happy to answer questions about that. Uh, I wanted to let everyone know that we, um, the BCC admin support team has met, um, and we are, we have engaged HR organizational development, performance excellence to assist us. We're moving forward with evaluating all of the materials that we have right now for BCC boards, commissions and committee staff, um, training, resources, many of which are now outdated, because they were done right before COVID hit. Um, and to create a roadmap for revamping what we've got and creating new materials for both a sort of an onboarding and an ongoing training plan, so that BCC staff will be prepared to carry out their function. We found that there's been quite a bit of staff turnover and there's really, um, a need for this. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, that we're working on that. And then I, of course, have the training opportunities, um, that I always provide, that I really recommend. We have the disability summit coming up soon in July that I, I would recommend everyone, um, consider participating in and, uh, just lists a, a number of other training opportunities. So I'm happy to take, uh, any questions you may have about things in the office.
All right. Seeing no questions. Thank you for that update and a reminder that, um, the document that Karen was just sharing was emailed to us early this afternoon, so you can refer back to it. Takes us to our next agenda item, which is future agenda items. Um, and just a reminder that we just agreed to have the, um, Alder Intern Matching Program revised edition with feedback from our peers, um, before us at our meeting, next meeting on the 25th, um, as well as a presentation on the social media pilot and next steps. Um, a good point that was brought up today in our meeting is that we are entering, we are in budget season already, but, um, it's coming up quickly. And so looking at some of the other, um, topics of interest, increased Alder pay is on there. And so, um, if there are any other, uh, prioritizations within this current list that, uh, members would like to amplify for our next one or two, um, or three agendas, uh, please feel free to share that feedback with Chief of Staff Alder Govendarajan.
I, I would like to say the increased Alder pay for the next meeting after August 1st. I don't know what date that is, but.
September.
That one.
Okay, we have one meeting in August.
Yep. So the first meeting of September, then.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. Not seeing any other hands raised or Alders in the queue. I'm going to keep moving us forward because of time. Okay. So, uh, you will notice the last agenda item, um, before us today is, uh, will be in closed session. Um, in order to go into closed session, we do need a motion. So at this time, I'd entertain one. Alder Figu- Vice President Figaro Cole?
Do I have to make a special motion for that?
It's in your, yes.
I moved that the committee convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.85-1D, Wisconsin Statute 2, consider strategy for crime detection of private or prevention, specifically to dismiss, to discuss Alder staff and council meeting security. Thank you.
Seconded by Alder Conklin. Alder Evers, did you have a question or were you trying to second the motion?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm just concerned that Alder Vitterver and I are going to be able to get to the council meeting on time. It, is it, how long do you expect this to take? And is it, would it be appropriate to refer this to the next CCEC meeting?
Uh, let's see, we're at 5:50. I don't, I would say if it takes us longer than 10 minutes, then we would adjourn. Um, just to be considerate of our peers who are traveling. Does that sound amenable? I don't think it should take that long, though, Alder Evers, to answer. All right, so we will go into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, vote. We have a motion and a second on the floor and I'm going to assume unanimous consent unless I see or hear otherwise. And, uh, just for those who may be attending from the public or watching, um, once we are adjourned, well, adjourned straight from closed session instead of returning, um, back. So that will be the end of our meeting. All right, and so I see Stefan. Uh, if you could do your magic.
All right, so, uh, what I am doing right now is I'm just waiting for our live stream to end. Our stream.